I know Brian, if you want to, I know you sent a letter, some people may not have been able to digest it all, but if you want to kick us off.
Alright.
Thanks for coming too.
Absolutely, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thanks for having this work session with us. I think very briefly, we'll do a quick introduction for our team. I'll say a couple of words and then turn it over to Rowan to talk about some of the design concepts that we've been working on since our last meeting. So, let's start.
I'm Darf Santos, who is the developer of that.
Brian, I'm Richard Holter with Coolview.
Rowan and Adam with KTGI.
Adam, K T G Y.
Ted Buller with Land Design.
I'm Chuck Craps from FICA.
Someone again.
Lo Washington, Council of Reston.
Ken Canen on board.
Richard Miller, one of the vice chairs.
Jacopolis.
Neil Roseberg.
Bruce Ray.
Great. So, to give a very brief recap of where we've been on this project with the DRB and some of the prior presentations and development plans submissions we've made to you. So, in July of last year, we submitted a plan that had two multifamily buildings and a townhouse component to it, and you had given us conceptual approval of that plan. So, also going to that, we had further discussions with Fairfax County about the plan, and it was clear that the county wanted us to try to strengthen the community gathering area element of the plan. And we did that with the county, and then came back to you all with that revised version of the plan in November, which you had a number of comments on, most significantly that you wanted us to, very clearly wanted us to strengthen the tree preservation around the entire perimeter, and were not in favor of the community gathering area kind of eating into the tree buffer in any way. And we went back to the drawing board and came up with a revised design. We submitted that design to the county. The county found that plan to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And then we brought that plan to you in April. And clearly, you did not favor that plan for a number of reasons, and we realized that we missed the mark with that plan. And so, since that time, we've been working on potential revisions to the design. We have a number of options to share with you. And when we had filed that plan in April of this year, we had thought, based on previous comments that you had given us, that we were responding to your comments in a way that would meet with your approval and the county's approval. And clearly, that didn't happen. So, again, we're here to roll over our sleeves to figure out a way that we might be able to move forward. And we have a number of different design options rather than just one to present to you tonight and get your feedback on. Second, the letter that I submitted electronically is a summation of all of the comments that we have received from you at the last couple of meetings and from the Reston Association committees, the Reston Association staff, and a letter that was given to us that was documenting all of those comments. And we realized through the course of the project that we've been responding to specific county comments, we've responded in writing to comments from the Reston Planning and Zoning Committee, but we hadn't yet responded to comments that we received from you and from the RA committees in detail. And so, that's what this is. I wanted to give you a chance to read as soon as we had it ready. Obviously, I understand if you didn't consume all of this 30-page letter that quickly, but we're happy to answer any questions if you do have any questions about that. And then, third, just to clarify, a couple of quick things to sort of preface for our discussion. We've been talking a lot about the naturalized area around the perimeter of the property, the tree buffer, tree canopy numbers based on the county's public facilities manual requirements, open space based on the county zoning ordinance provisions. And those are all distinct, different things that I think in some prior discussions have been sort of conflated and overlapped in different ways. And so, just to very clearly and very quickly give you a snapshot of where we've been and where we are with some of the options that we're going to present to you tonight, I'm going to pass this out, and it shows you those numbers. And the gist of it is, we've been improving all of these measures in terms of reducing the massing of the building, reducing the previous surface, increasing the tree preservation, increasing the open space, and increasing the naturalized area around the perimeter of the property with each of these submissions. So, I just wanted to clarify, in case there's been any confusion over the previous course of the project, where we are and where we're with these numbers.
One quick reminder too, we do have a panel meeting at 7:00.
Yes.
So, we can stop in a few minutes in the course of just a rapid.
So, that wraps up all I want to say.
That's a good point. I was trying to speak to you about that.
Does that work that well? Yeah. We've got maybe 10 to 15 minutes from Rowan and Adam to go over the design options we've been talking about. They wanted to leave roughly 40 minutes to have a conversation with you all.
Cool. Yep. That's great. Thank you very much.
Very cool. Thank you for having us back. We have, over the last course of this project, listened to a lot of the comments coming from various people and sources and so on, and tried to respond, I think, as best as we can. Today's a work session, as Brian mentioned, I'll go through this as briefly as I can. And then, we'd love to hear your comments on some of these directions that we have going forward. We have four different ideas, two of which you have seen before, two are new, and essentially, we'd love to get your thoughts on these. So, I think what we did is, when we listened to a lot of the comments, we thought we would go back and revisit what we thought the essence of Reston was, and specifically what the essence of Reston means for this neighborhood, St. John's in northwest. And that is important to us, I think, because we wanted a document that you will see going forward here to create, that would inform us as we seek and we thought to develop the design, and to really create a home for residents who we think understand the essence of Reston and grace Reston and everything that it has to offer. So, I'll take you through a brief presentation here, and I think we're going to have to refer to the scheme for that, and I'll do the same here as well. So, this is what we believe is the vastest and our vision for Reston. This is essentially a community that's really intertwined with the loops and trails, and really, the connection that each cluster forms with the rest of Reston and the various town centers and the village centers as well. And we think the sense of discovery and providing an opportunity for discovery through sort of serendipitous moments as you walk through Reston and the various trails and so on, I think we want to bring that same idea of discovery through serendipity into our site, where we create spaces that are natural spaces and community spaces that are characteristic of Reston onsite on this property. We think the idea of connection is very important to Reston, and that is connection to the natural environment, environments and trails. And so, in and around this property, we seek to create those connections and provide a broader connection to the trail network that exists in Reston as well, so that you better connect this site to everything else that's available to the residents in Reston. We think engagement is very important, and that is, we'd like to encourage public engagement by providing onsite sort of inviting moments where the people who live around that area can interact with this site to linger, to visit, and to really enjoy what's being offered onsite in a public sense. And finally, we think the character of Reston, the identity, the unique identity and history of Reston that exists is very important. There's something uniquely Reston, and we hope to catch that, capture that on this site. Some of the things that are very important are certainly the trees, the woods, the buffers, a sort of a little bit of spite from the streets around that. That's very characteristic of Reston. Certainly, providing front stoops and a neighborhood is really part of Reston, so we hope to capture all of that in our design. So, I think everybody is very aware of the site, and we're just doing it well, and we're hitting the targets of the Reston Parkway and all of the things that are surrounding our site. We took once again a look at the, we talked about the connectivity, and one of our guidelines that I just mentioned was connection. So, this is sort of informing us as to pedestrian and bicycle circulation that exists on the site. I'm going to be going up in numbers in Parkway, the bike path provides along Center Harbor, and really, connections to the trails that are, specifically, the Pink Trail is really. So, in green, you can see that we are trying to create a circulation path or loop around our site itself that will then connect to the various trails and so on that exist. So, with that, I'll talk about four concepts, really based on two ideas. The first idea is the idea of a neighborhood. And I think you have seen these two schemes which we presented earlier, and they're based on a neighborhood. I'll sort of talk about them in concept first. So, this is what we call the neighborhood scheme. And you've seen what's developed for this, where essentially, in the center part of the site, we created a neighborhood street which has visual circulation, and then we created buildings that front that street with the front stoops. The idea here was that you're creating a sort of a traditional neighborhood street that is typical of Reston. In this scheme, you had the tree grove essentially, I'm sorry, you had the tree buffer preserved all around the sites. And so, if I go to the next slide, essentially, what we've indicated here is just a tree preserve that's all around the site that we believe is very important. The other important part of this scheme was the loop trail. We talked about providing in that early diagram a loop trail around our site that would then connect to the Pink Trail and Reston Parkway and Center Harbor and all that's around the site as well. This is sort of speaking to the connection that we talked about as one of our guidelines. So, this diagram shows you essentially that we've located the tree buffer, we've located the loop trail, and we've created these moments as we talked about it, as I spoke earlier, where we invite the public to come into our site, linger, and enjoy some of the facilities available to the public onsite itself. And sort of what's left over then here is the residential. So, that's the idea that we had in the neighborhood scheme. The next scheme we had is what we call the tree grove scheme. And this, we have two design ideas based on this scheme as well which you have not seen. These are essentially in response to the guidance you all have provided us over the last few months, and these two schemes are like that. So, this scheme provides that big tree buffer preserve that's in the middle of the site that we all agrees is very important to us. And so, that's our guiding principle on this site. We further enhanced that with the tree preserve, which is similar to the first scheme we saw, where the perimeter of the site has a tree preserve, very characteristic of Reston where you have a buffer around any sort of development, and so that the buildings themselves are really not that visible from the surrounding streets. And the third idea about this also is that loop trail, again, the connectivity to allow people from the neighborhood to walk around our site, to come into our site, and to enjoy moments along the site as well. And I'll, we'll detail these moments in a little bit from a landscape standpoint, and we'll see what we're talking about there. So, essentially, both of these sites, we believe, sort of provide the connection, the discovery, the engagement, and the character that we think is important for this location. So, with that, I'll give it to Ted to talk about the landscape.
I think I'll stand up. So, you took first pass at putting the landscape plan together based on our work with K T G Y and the buildings that they've produced. And so, they're very loose sketches, but I just wanted to put some ideas out there. First one, like Rowan was saying, that this would be the neighborhood street coming in off of Center Harbor Road and linking this neighborhood street. We love the idea of having front doors and stoops activating the streetscape and eventually leading to the trail, the loop trail that goes around the whole site. We also have the idea that if you start to incorporate meadow spaces, maybe little naturalized planting areas around the site that become a transition zone between the residential landscape, they'll be closer to the buildings, and then the tree preserves, it's almost like a gradient or a transition as you're working out to the naturalized area. That could happen in a few different locations. We are showing pool terrace. There'd be one pool terrace for both buildings, and that'd be the private amenity space for the residents of this property. Things that would be included are the pool, obviously, but shade structures and the lounge atmosphere that are kind of typical in any multifamily building now. The trail, obviously, is the big connecting piece that's winding around the entire site. And we would like to pull it into some of the smaller pockets of green that are created where the building and the landscape interact. We feel like these could almost be little fountain spaces, maybe it's passive seating areas, maybe some of them are more active, maybe there's fitness stations. We have the idea that this could be a trailhead for bikers, runners, pedestrians, and that is what connects you to the Pink Trail on North Village Road, maybe the bike repair station or water drinking fountain or something like that to create and reiterate the vision of the connections that we have throughout Reston. Really, on this scheme, this becomes a large, we're calling it the front lawn, that's welcoming people to the site, your traditional lawn where people could play in the formal sports, frisbee or bocce, just to activate the space when you arrive from Center Harbor. And then, lastly, is the tree save that we want to show. We're trying to preserve, I think, roughly 95% of it. We do have the addition of this road. For the rest of it, we want to maintain the mature trees and then add supplemental native plantings around it.
So, this is a scheme that you have seen before, and there's two schemes that this is based on. And again, the idea is whatever is left over from the tree preserve and the trail and so on, that is then left over for the building. So, we're really having the green spaces define our concept and then take the buildings into whatever is available after that. And again, all of these, we think, respond to some of the character, the sense of discovery and engagement that we think is important to Reston. And so, the next one is a diagram of two schemes, two newer schemes that we've developed, and we'll get into those a little bit further. Ted will describe the landscape elements of course.
We believe a lot of the smaller spaces that I just previously could be incorporated into this. You could have little turf areas or meadow areas. You can still have the trailhead, maybe like a natural playground tucked into one of the corners, little pockets of green, and you wind around the trail around the site. The big difference, obviously, is the central tree grove, and that would be our main amenity space. That's creating your entrance to the site. That's what you'd see when you would arrive. That's what's going to pull people in, we hope, encourage people to get outside. Buildings are still framing it like a traditional park with front doors and stoops, and then a drive around it with some parallel parking. And then, we think you could tuck in your traditional park picnic tables, seating, grills, different activities right around the grove to create a really central organizing space for the rest of the site to respond to.
And you have one more, which is some landscape details that you want to speak to.
Yeah, these are almost like vignettes. You zoom in to like the pockets of the building I was talking about. You could have your trail and then the building on three sides, and this could become part of the stormwater management, part of the native plantings, seating areas, the things that we've been talking about. That's how we envision this as a landscape form that we could use. Here's the pool deck, obviously, a large pool, called him a sun deck, a shallow area, and then you wrap it with your pool deck, trellis, seating, planters. Usually, you know, they're on the south side of the building. This is the trailhead I was mentioning. It could be a large paved area, and you can get different types of furniture for stretching, rusty, warm-up, cool-down. That's the idea, bike repair, water, and then your trail connections just over to the east. And lastly, it would be nice to incorporate some sort of playground or natural play, that idea, but it could easily fit near the tree save, not too close to the buildings, and provide a space for young children.
Excellent. So, getting to the schemes themselves, this is a scheme that you've seen essentially, which was presented and approved by the DRB in July of 2016. And the idea of this scheme was, again, creating that neighborhood street in the middle. We have the tree preserve strongly defined on the outside of the building, and then a loop trail that you can see around the building itself.
So, this is a scheme.
I'm sorry.
With one clarification, this scheme removes the townhouses. So, the townhouses plus those two multifamily buildings were the design that you had given the conceptual approval on in July.
Yeah, I think you have to be careful of that because this scheme was not approved by this board. I'd be clear about that.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the same footprint of the multifamily buildings.
No, we actually got larger. But that's okay. You made up for those units elsewhere in the building. I mean, I'm looking at the plans right here, the one with the townhouses. The main, the big buildings became larger when you lost the townhouses.
When we moved to, we moved to April, yes.
Right. And that was one of the reasons why this plan didn't get approved.
Right, but that's not, but this isn't the plan from April, just to be clear. This is the plan from July, just without the townhouses. This is not where the building got bigger. The building got bigger in April.
So, that's this July plan just removing the townhouses.
Correct. Yes, correct, just for clarification.
I think from a concept standpoint, we still think that it reflects the principles of the outline, which is the tree preserve, the loop, the neighborhood street. The second concept based on the same, on the neighborhood idea, is this one which was presented to the DRB and K T G Y in April of this year. And this is similar to the first scheme. The idea here was that the two garages are more concentrated so that the vehicular circulation is more in the middle of the site, and the outside of the site is more effective for the trails and so on. So, again, you've seen this scheme before similar to this, and I just wanted to read right where we came from. So, the next two schemes are sort of much more organic, which is some of the comments we heard, and they're sort of much more allow for the trees to be a major part of the site. And so, as we had detailed on the diagram before, this is the tree preserve in the middle of the site. And we certainly preserved the tree buffer around it as well, and then the loop trail goes around allowing for people to come in and enjoy the site as well. In this scheme, we have a loop road that goes around the site, which allows for parking, front stoops and so on, people drive, says that. The second scheme based on this concept is similar, except that we completely preserved the site, the tree buffer and so on here, and the vehicular circulation is pushed more to the outside. So, again, both of these schemes are fairly organic. They work with the existing trees and, like, really dwarfed, the trees really dwarfed the buildings themselves. We also have a couple of ideas, architectural images and precedents as far as the language and directions, and that's another thing we have to get your feedback on. And we took some photographs of a couple of different directions, and in this case, we're looking more at sort of the stone and whether it's a T-111 vertical siding direction. It's a little more contemporary, older Reston direction, whereas the second scheme employs a little more colonial elements, more brick, more horizontal lap siding. And so, we'd love to hear your comments on this as well. And so, that's really the end of the division. I went over my apologies, and we'd love to hear your comments.
Sorry, I'll stop.
I missed a couple of your schemes, so I'm going to jump right in and ask, probably wasting more time to do that, but I got the neighborhood scheme, the tree grove scheme, and then all of a sudden, we were on scheme four, which was a variation of the tree grove scheme. What was scheme three? Can you go back and show?
So, yeah, my apologies if I was not clear about that. So, we have two schemes based on the neighborhood idea.
Okay, so we have two on each.
And two based on the tree grove idea. And so, scheme three is this one where the loop, there's a loop road, a vehicular road.
Maybe it's scheme two that I won't see then, just understanding.
That's the April scheme.
So, and understanding that. And then, scheme one is?
Scheme one is the one I erroneously represented as being approved.
Yeah, last July. So, July was the townhouse, is a variation on that, and it's a good scheme. Thank you.
How do the building sizes footprint relate in scheme one, all the different schemes? Can you give us some?
Generally, it's beginning smaller. Two and three are close to each other. I'm sorry, three and four are close to each other. Four is slightly larger than three the way it's laid out right now, but that's flexible depending on how we lay out the final layout. Right now, they're close to the same. They're both smaller than the usual scheme.
How about compared to scheme one?
Scheme one, they are smaller than April.
Smaller than scheme one?
So, we were estimating 467 in scheme one. We were 441, 454, and 234. They're still a little bit small. Those are all just massive numbers with difficulty.
Are they shorter?
They have similar massing heights to the April scheme. They're shorter than scheme one. They're roughly on par with scheme two, where we went to primarily four-story, four and three and two-story size. This is the location areas around some of the corners. We still have a little bit of like that flight we had in the previous.
Do you have drawings that can sort of lay out?
So, these are all different.
I think a couple of questions, please. We're just kind of working here together. And I appreciate Brian's letter going through every, about period, comments and discussions. I mean, the biggest thing we talked about last time you were here is how big these buildings are. I mean, they're enormous. And I think that was our primary concern. I'm not convinced yet that's been addressed. So, there are a couple of points I just wanted to ask. Here, I mean, things got twisted and turned, but really, I liked the landscaping plan. The landscape architecture is presented as very creative, and we still have this problem that these buildings are too big. And I would like to talk about that and see how do we get a response to that. I have yet to see a response to, yeah, and we made the buildings smaller, because that's what we've been asking since 2014. All I see in looking at all these different plans and site plans and so on, the buildings have gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. And even the one that, I mean, conceptually approved last year, whatever it was, we still had the townhouses. You guys kind of had to start all over again when the townhouses went away. Sorry. I'd like, and we need to talk about that. I almost don't care about any of the Reston stuff until we resolve that. These are still the same sized buildings we saw two years ago, with some variation. And I think that's huge. I mean, we're not getting anywhere with that. We have another project, the Patriot, is doing Kensington project, which is an enormous, we should go do that.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Thank you. But I, and we asked, finally, where is your cutoff point? How small can you make that building to actually affect the things we're talking about? And so far, I've seen no move to do that. You might have chopped off a unit here or a unit there, but these are still 150 whatever-plus units, and you're twisting and turning and adding trees and growing areas and all this kind of stuff. That's all well and good, but if we're going to get anywhere with this, I think we have to talk turkey here and say, where's your cutoff point? Is 450 is absolutely the smallest you can make it to make your profit out of this project. Then, we got a real problem. Can you go to 350 and still do okay? In which case, you can answer some of the questions I think we're asking. This is just too big. I mean, you've heard that from the community, you've heard from RA in their letters, you've certainly heard it from us for two years, and I see no move to make that happen. We're still where we were. We got some other things, just generally, these are all very creative, and when they're flat, it makes sense. There's almost a 40-foot drop from one end of the site to the other. I've yet to see any response to the natural topography of the site. And we have some places, we got 12-foot-high retaining walls, 14-foot-high retaining walls. Some of the attempts is like, we're trying to make this whole site flat so it works for your buildings, but it's not a flat site. There's a huge drop from one end to the other. The, keeping in mind, and this is where it gets, you use the phrase essence of Reston, this is a cluster. It's going to be a cluster like all of our other clusters. And it's not going to be a small bite out of an urban apple somewhere that's dropping out of the sky here. Our clusters are not urban. The idea of a center street with stoops is kind of foreign to Reston. I mean, and just using some of your things about, you said center street is typical of Reston, most typical of Reston Town Center. It might have something to do with the village center, but it has nothing to do with the residential cluster. So, I think we need to talk about that too, and how does this relate? I mean, I think your presentation was nice, but I think it missed a lot of the points of what Reston really is. It was very flowery and made it all sound great, but the center street in a cluster is not Reston. It doesn't work that way. The, every cluster has their own identity, and I think when we get to the architecture, we will work toward that. But so far, this is an apartment development. It's not a cluster. And I think what we liked before when we had the townhouses, which unfortunately, we called And I think what we liked before, when we had the townhouses, which unfortunately gone away, was starting to get toward a cluster. So we gave a conceptual approval for that, because it was starting to look like it might belong. Now, with my mind, as we said, there was April, March, whenever you guys were here before, this is so off the charts, and so uncluster-like, and so unreston-like, we need to see that change. And I don't see anything you showed us so far tonight, but that's why we're here. Let's see what we can do. The loop around the outside, I do not understand that. There's no cluster in Reston that has a loop running around it, so I don't know why that's, everyone's waving flags and saying, "We need this loop, we need this loop." I think it's crazy, I don't know what the point is. All it does is cut back into the tree cover, tree cover. The tree grove in the center, that's okay, if we could save that, I have no problem with that. It looks like things are getting turned around with your thing that you turned the whole angle, it looks like some of the points might be getting closer to Reston Parkway. For two years, we've been saying, "Set back from Reston Parkway." Don't overlook Reston Parkway, don't have four and five any-story anything's up there looming over Reston Parkway. I don't know if it still does or not, we'll get to that in the architecture. But those are the things we've been saying for a couple of years now, that we are looking for a response, and all I see is a little pushing and pulling around where it's still the same enormous building, the building footprints, I mean, when you look at this versus this, I mean, this is 2016, this is 2017, these buildings are getting bigger and bigger and bigger, not smaller and smaller and smaller, which is what we've been saying. We, you know, need help from you guys, I'm not seeing much help other than a very nice landscape plan for buildings that don't belong where they're going, okay? It's a great landscape plan. I understand when we get to the architecture, we have to accept the fact, architecture in Reston hopefully is not gonna be 1970s design anymore. And the last thing we want is for Reston to become a museum for 1970s architecture. It had some good points.
Well, this was the 80s, in North Reston.
I'm sorry, in the 80s, I'm sorry. So it's much newer. You know, so I think when we get to the architecture, I think you're gonna find us a little more receptive, with things that are perhaps a little more contemporary, which is fine, but at the same time, not urban or residential. And we've been saying that for two or three years now. I mean, those are some comments, I'm hoping we can get somewhere with this now. The buildings are still the same size they've been for two years, generally. And I don't see a move to say, "Okay, we can still make this project go if we lose 100 units, and if you lose 100 units, then it's all three stories, not four and five." Or something, I mean, that's what I came here to, I'm hoping we can get to, not, it's the same old buildings, but we've twisted them and saved a couple more trees, that's, we're not getting anywhere.
So, a couple of things. One quick one. The trail loop around the perimeter of the property does not eat into the tree buffer at all. So, taking away the trail loop doesn't increase the tree buffer.
Right.
That's all internal to the tree buffer. So we started with the tree buffer, that's full preservation, except for the access to the main utility point. Other than that, tree buffer is fully preserved and working within that tree buffer in any of these schemes, including with the trail. So, in terms of the building getting bigger, and your concern about the overall footprint of the buildings, the buildings in footprint have gotten bigger since the July 2016 plan. The July 2016 plan is also, in addition to being the smallest footprint, is the tallest building, right? And so one of the things that we've been trying to address is, are you more concerned about the height, or are you more concerned about the footprint? And based on the conceptual approval from last July, and then moving to a plan that had lower heights but was more spread out in April, it seemed like your concern was that you would prefer to have less footprint. And if that's the case, then we can go in that direction. There's only so much we can do in terms of narrowing the footprint and reducing the height at the same time. But what we've been working on in the scheme since the July scheme of last year, was to try to reduce the height, because we heard that that was a concern as well. And so a lot of what we've been working on is to try to tease out sort of where you are on those things, right? And it would be helpful for us to get some sense of priority. If you told us that the July of last year's scheme is where you wanna be in a, from a footprint standpoint, then that's something that we can work with. And I'm not, I'm not sure, based on your comments, if your concern is one in which the footprint's growing is an issue, but these footprints are okay, or at this point, those footprints are not okay. This July plan, or the July multifamily buildings from last year, without the townhouses, obviously there's, there's a character of development that comes with the townhouses. We weren't able to keep those for a bunch of reasons. But without the townhouses, the plan, if we were to go with those footprints or something similar to those footprints, has more open space, more natural area, less impervious surface. So in every sort of objective measure that we understand to be important for this site, this is an improvement over where we've been. We've taken it another direction since then, to explore out where, where your preferences are. And so I think it would be helpful if we could hear, you know, in comparison to this plan, where people are.
Well, it might, it might be helpful to, sort of, seems to go well when we sort of each take it to it, and it seems smoother when we do that. So why don't we, why don't we do that, Bruce? I know you haven't been involved the whole time, but any sort of initial comments, thoughts, feelings?
I wouldn't emphasize, having seen the correspondence, that I viewed us as starting, essentially, new, because we, the other plans did work, able to pull it off the table. I understand that conceptually, we're talking about things that we talked about before, but I'm looking at this, whatever conceptually we approved in the past is off the table as far as I'm concerned. I think the harder question was, you turned it in terms of height versus footprint, and I think, I'll speak for myself, but I think it's a common thing, we've been concerned in these redevelopment projects with size, overall, and the size overall is not accomplished by trading off the height. I think what we've been saying, and maybe not as clearly to you, but in, clearly to your partner, that, and you heard it again tonight, the overall commitment on the, in this case, whatever it is, 450 or 478, whatever it was, is, that's the driving force, it seems to me. Once you tell us that that is, or is not flexible, that's gonna be key to what we think can fit here, and that's, that's been it. And so just playing with height versus footprint, I don't think is ultimately the question. That's my perspective, listening to this and coming to it a little later than the rest of the team.
Thank you.
So, let me follow on to that. You know, as you look to the architecture that might make this more compatible with the context, and you're drawing from projects in the, in older parts of Reston, because of texture, because of detail, you know, in other words, scale, and the scale of those projects is much, much smaller. So when it gets to, how do you find compatibility, I don't know that it's gonna be easy, you haven't really shown so a lot of architecture on the buildings tonight, but I think it's gonna be quite challenging, regardless of how you rotate the buildings on the site, to find that kind of essence of Reston, as you described it, to find that sort of character. And I don't know 100%, because, you know, we're envisioning how this might develop as we look at footprints. Just on the issue of Center Boulevard versus preserved green space, preserved green space is better, but that by itself doesn't say that the scheme's gonna be better. I think the polywad buildings are kind of a little concerning about how the architecture might develop on it. There's a, you showed Waterview Cluster several times up there, and there's a, an order to the individual little neighborhoods of that cluster, just as an example, where there's sort of moments of small-scale neighborliness, if you will, that these types of schemes, I'm having a hard time imagining could ever happen. They feel more like Condo Canyon, as it used to be referred to down in Alexandria along Shirley Highway, large buildings with terraces, large buildings, and they're not that tall. I know they're not those 20-story towers, but the footprints kind of remind you of that, the Breuer buildings downtown, with their Y shapes and such. So, no to the formality of the big boulevard, yes to the organic qualities of this, but still very concerned that the scale's gonna produce any kind of architecture that we like.
As in, well, obviously a lot of good comments here, but one of the things I keep thinking about is, and what might be driving you into the parking garage, but is there a way to sort of break these up a bit into some smaller buildings, or is there essentially a certain critical mass you need for your parking garages? I guess any thoughts there?
I think people want parking in proximity to their homes, and a covered connection. And I think these, these schemes provide that. I think where we could detach some of the homes from the parking, that would be not preferred.
Well, I'm not necessarily suggesting you detach them, but you do smaller buildings with their parking here, smaller building here, separate it out.
The, you know, with the ramps and all of that technical crap that goes into it, you pretty much end up with something of that size, just to cover that side, or one of those would be the other, so you pretty much end up with that sort of.
Good thinking, yeah.
Is there, maybe to, if I may, to ask a more basic question? I mean, is there, in the view of all of you, is there, is there a viable plan that has the building configured with this type of above-grade parking, with the units wrapping the building? Because that's, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a fairly significant threshold question for us. And if, if that, if that type of approach to the site isn't gonna work in any configuration, regardless of how we turn the, you know, play with the massing of the building and we adjust the heights, and we've tried a lot, and we can talk about it in more detail, to, to really step the heights of these buildings down, and to lower them, and to try to reduce the mass, and the square footage of the buildings is going down in all these schemes. It looks bigger in plan, because footprint's getting bigger. But we reduce the square footage at every iteration, and, you know, I guess maybe to get to maybe a fundamental issue, I don't know that there's a scheme that we can come up with that doesn't have above-grade parking that's wrapped with units in some configuration.
Well, you're inventing a new type. I think you're inventing a new type, and so, you know, it was exciting to talk about what precedents there are in Reston, but there is no precedent in Reston for this, that I know of, doesn't come to mind anywhere. So I think that's something we're grappling with. How do you create something contextual when you're creating something that doesn't exist? And at a scale it doesn't exist, and so I think that's a very good question that you've asked, and I don't, I don't, I haven't answered for you.
I think if it's coming down this direction, I'll say anyways, the, I'm a little disappointed that we're still where we were a year ago. And I think that, to answer your question, Brian, don't send me back a letter saying this is what you said and here's your answer. For example, a lot of other things that could happen. If, I don't think we're saying no to this particular style of building, the Texas Donut or whatever you want to call it, not particularly crazy about them, but if this works, okay. I mean, if, and that's why I asked a couple minutes ago, where's your breaking point to make this a viable project? And if this whole thing was two and three stories instead of four and seven, five, this might be a whole different conversation. But you guys haven't made that commitment to get to where you're responding to what we're asking. At least I don't see it yet, it's still the same buildings, same number of units, give or take a couple, and so on. But something like that would give us something, give me anyway, something more to chew on. Wow, two to three units, I think we can, we can do, we can work with that. Now let's see how we make all this fit on the site. And you still have the interior parking and so on, but that might reduce your unit count to 100 units, in which case, wow, well, then it's just not viable, we walk away. We're all trying to figure out, where is that point? And where, where can we get? I think kind of what you're hearing is, this many units of those buildings on this site, buildings this size, is a real problem for us. And we're trying to see if you can come up with something that makes that not so much of a problem, that we can say, "Okay." Whether it's Texas Donuts, or heaven help us, surface parking, or something else, I don't know, so it's hard for us to answer that. That's why we got these creative guys right here, just to say, "Ah, we hear you, finally. What can we do?" I mean, it's, at the last meeting, and I don't wanna take Ken's team away from him, but he, with that other project I referenced, he said we're at the point where someone's gonna have to make a bold decision, I love this, that's why I'm quoting this, and whether it's us or you, someone's gonna have to make a bold decision about where's this going. And if you guys have to make that bold decision, say, "Okay, we can drop it 350, we can do X, Y, and Z, still it's a viable project, we'll still make money, or it'll be happy." Okay. I'm not sure if it's for us to do, we respond not to unit count, but to the massing, the context, all this other stuff. And I don't think we're seeing that happen, you know, there's something that we can say.
Okay, check. So, and I think I understand, and I, we, we have tried to go through these various design iterations, focused more on the comments that we've received, and the massing and the tree preservation, and how things fit on the site, rather than the specific number of units. So when we, when we came up with these alternative designs, we didn't say, "Okay, we're gonna get to a design that's 400, whatever it is, 54 units or 440 units." We came up with these, or wrote it, and that, we came up with these alternative designs, and then we can back into the number of units. So I think, sort of, to, to follow up on your point, we're trying to figure out what level of sort of footprint and height you're generally comfortable with, or where that zone is, and then we can back in the number of units into that. And I think, so, so the, I'll sort of turn your question around, and we're looking for the same thing. You're looking for, what number of units do you think we can remove from this project in order to get to a massing that you would be more comfortable with? And I think we're coming at it from, what, tell us what level of massing you're comfortable with, or moving in the right direction, and then we can figure out how many units can fit into that massing, right? So that's sort of what I'm looking for. And when I say, you know, height versus footprint, I'm not saying that that's a, you know, mutually exclusive choice, of you have to choose height or you have to choose footprint. You could say, "We're comfortable if you reduce the height by some amount, and if you reduce the massing by, or the footprint by some amount." And if there's a, if there's some, some direction you could give us as to what that is, then we can go back and say, "Okay, if, if that's the parameters, then we can figure out how to lay it out on the site, and how many units will fit in it." And at that point, after we would know how many units fit in it, then it's up for Buzo to decide whether that's still a viable project or not. But that's sort of the way we wanted to go about this, rather than some specific number to get to.
What's appealing about scheme one, to me, is the smaller footprint, but you're right, that has an impact on height. But I don't like the strong boulevard, that doesn't really fit what we're trying to do. But I like the sense that you've created a cluster that has some geometry to it, that has some order to it. I don't think one has to resort to a piece of town center with this boulevard to bring some order to the site. That's what's disorienting about scheme four. So if you can do the idea of the tree save, find some order, some architecture, some geometry, and get it down to three to four stories, we're there, for me.
That's, that's very helpful. One comment on tree save, and I think it's nice to have it in the middle, but I think for the neighbors, the tree save around the exterior is, is most important, and you can't replace that, right? You know, it's gonna take 50 years to replace that or more, so-
These, these people don't get it though, not at all. The ones along the street.
Yeah.
This, this is, everybody's got a tree view. It's just-
Well, yeah, and I'm not saying I'm supporting this exact, I think there's maybe a better layout, but what I'm saying is, this area, for the people that live there today, who are in the audience today, is probably the most important part, the more you can preserve that. So, as you're, as this is evolving and changing, I think the more, you know, you have to be sensitive to all the tree save, but the more you can sort of pull it this way, sort of reduce it, I'm not against the higher stories, and I've said that since the beginning, but because the more you can sort of reduce that footprint, the less impact you have in the natural buffers, but, I agree, so you have an answer.
Yes, I would say that I would really agree-
Yes, I would say that I would really appreciate the little landscape plan for tree preservation that is there. I appreciate the outdoor rooms, landscaping, lines, but I'll have to, I agree with you, and that was what I was thinking about, if it is possible to break the building into separate areas, so you have different pieces here. And maybe with regard to the height, to the tree preservation there, and maybe having it more internal, so that it doesn't feel so overwhelming with the height. But the massing, I don't think, I'm not comfortable with at this point. Another point that I agree with Richard on is, with regards to Reston, Reston neighborhood, it's trying to work with the topography, having the building work with the topography instead of working against it, creating panels where possible. So that is what I would add.
Ken? Sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
I think my colleagues have made some good comments, I'll try not to pile on. The, I always go back to why we're here as the board, and our objective, and I'll just reiterate them, is to integrate the proposed structure with the prevailing character of the neighborhood through the use of appropriate scale, comma, siting, comma, massing, comma, materials, color, comma, architectural elements, other details. That's what we're charged to do. But when we look at your schemes, as I'm having a dilemma with the other project, you are trying to put very large aircraft carriers into a very small slip. And that's, that's difficult for me, because as I looked at the neighborhoods, even in these photos here, if you look at the neighborhoods around there, they don't even have anything near the mass that you're proposing. And the model that works best right now, interestingly, is the one that is sitting, except for the surface parking. I'm not a big fan of surface parking, but if you look at the existing St. John's Wood, it works by design, as do the other communities around it. And so I think we were anticipating that this would be some sort of a way to improve what really works well already. And I don't see it happening here. I do really respect the responsiveness with regard to the tree preservation, the landscaping, what have you. I think you got that. Because one of the other things I hear, too, and I think you might have read it, because I think I'm seeing it in some parts, is the essential elements of Reston. I think some of you have reviewed those, and are trying to tie it into what you're trying to do here, so I give you a full credit for that. But as Richard said, and I just have to reiterate it here for this project as well, sooner or later, we've been doing this for many years now, one side or the other's going to have to get, because there's a big decision about to be made. And what I heard tonight is, quote unquote, "There's only so much we can do." And if that's the case, I'd like you to share between now and 10 minutes from now, well, how much can you do? Because otherwise, we're going to have another workshop, another workshop, and we're going to continue to delay your time. You've guys, you've got big bills to pay, we've got a lot of projects to review, as well, we want this to work, but right now, I appreciate your willingness to come here to create a win-win. But all I've seen now is just juggling around two very square pegs in a very round hole that isn't big enough to take it all. It's just, and so I'm going to have to continue to fight you on the massing. And perhaps there is a way to break these up, to go back to, as I said in the last meeting, you know, there were, there are existing seven or eight structures, and there is a huge dependency on surface parking, I get that, but it works. And maybe there's a way to tie in what exists to what you're attempting to do here, and we can work off of that. Scheme One might have had some possibility, but I'm still looking at the massing and the surrounding neighborhoods, and I can appreciate the neighbors going, "When the heck is going up next to me? Why did the day get dark when the sun's getting light?" Because I think that's going to happen. So I'm still at the same place I was the last time. But I respect what you're trying to do, but I'm just not seeing it at this point.
If I may sort of coalesce the couple of minutes we have left, I think of the, obviously, scale and massing in various ways has been said here today. We really appreciate the colleagues and the feedback. I think the question about the scale and the massing is also about how you perceive scale. In other words, is the building sort of a big mass in front of you? Or does that scale and mass reveal itself, it's sort of around the corners, and it's, again, a sense of discovery, and it's not sort of presented to you in a way that is offensive? I think if you look at any of the four schemes we have presented, I think the attempt has been to let in the trees, let in the landscaping, to create moments as you, as you go around the building. And so the pure idea of scale and height and number of units, there are ways to present that and to mitigate that in a sensitive way, and we believe in a way that is consistent with what is the essence of Reston, is what we are trying to do. And maybe it's, this is a failing on us, that we're sitting here looking at flat floor plans, but I think if you were able to look at the views we have, and the way we're letting in the trees and landscape, and maybe we need to present this in a, in a different way to show you that you do not actually perceive, even if you are there, a five-story building or a four-story mass in front of you. We think it's really mitigated by the way we're presenting it. And certainly, then we haven't gone to the architecture yet, and the rhythm of the architecture. And those are, any of you who are architects or designers on the board, or understand that those are sort of the language and the tricks we have at our disposal to really present the building, we think, in a way that captures the essence of what Reston is. So I would sort of humbly say that, just sort of calling out the number of stories and saying that that's too tall, maybe we can have a more specific discussion about how is that height being presented to you, how is that mass being presented to you? And you will find us very sensitive and very workable to that, if there is that sort of direction on your part as well.
Yeah, I don't, I understand what you're saying, I think perception is all, everyone perceives things differently. I think in this case, I don't know how long these buildings are, but like 400 feet across, something like that, from on the current March 2017 proposal. The city block in DC is 400 feet long. So I don't think there's any cluster in Reston presents a facade, whether it's broken up, projected out, recessed, whatever, that has a 400 city block wall elevation. So, and I think that's what I'm kind of getting at, that, my perception of that, whether it's going back and forth like yours are, that's still enormous. It's, to me, massive, no matter what I do. And a person is only somewhere around five and a half to six and a half feet tall, 30 feet, 40 feet, as you look up, particularly when you're close to it, like in the canyon that's created between your two buildings, that's an issue in terms of the massing and the scale and how you feel. You know, it's not like you're looking at a three-story brownstone or something like that, it is, you know, that's, I think, what we're getting at. So there's no, hey, if you make it all two stories, it's going to be perfect. I'm not even sure if that's the case. You know, but I think that's, we're all trying to see what we can do to make this work.
But I think it is the combination of the big footprint and the long facades and the five-story building. All of those things together create, and we've looked at it, you know, with you guys, so we're sitting here remembering what those prospective sketches looked like, and it's not compatible with what all of our folks here are going to appreciate. The scale feels like it has to come down, and that's based on my understanding of how buildings like this can do.
So unfortunately, we're out of time. A lot of good discussion, although I don't know that we got enough direction to come back with something official, so it sounds like there's more work to do. I know it's kind of frustrating for you, I'm sorry about that, but, you know, I think the goal is to have a process.
We want to be, we want to be a part of the process.
Yeah, come up with a good design. So, you know, follow up with the, with the, with your.